This brings the Tuesday, September 6th council meeting to order. And the first item on our agenda is a moment of reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel before you are the special counsel study minutes of July 5th, the special counsel meetings, study session of July 18th, and the council meeting minutes of July 18th. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. That brings us to communications, petitions, and awards. Mr. Wendt.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. There are a couple of introductions to be made today regarding new employees that have joined our Corps of Public Servants. The first of which that I'd like to introduce to you is our new zoning and planning coordinator. This is Mr. Ben Graham. Ben, I'll ask you to stand up. Who'd you bring with you today?
I have my mom and dad here and my fiancee, Auntie Bud. She's got a flat.
Oh, man. I hope she's okay. When she's your wife, you'll just leave this meeting and you'll go change her tire, I'm sure. But until you make probation, I guess you're stuck here. I hope she's okay. We welcome them. Ben, I'm gonna have you come right up here and I'll administer this oath. So, Mr. Graham is from Tip City. He's a master of public administration. He worked with us in the MPA Capstone project that we did with Castle Hills Pool. He's been a management assistant at the city of Germantown. He's been an intern at Washington Township. And also has interned with State Senator Beagle and also Congressman Turner's office. And so, really excited to have him hit the ground running in this position. And without further ado, I'll administer his oath.
Thank you.
I, Ben Graham, solemnly swear.
I, Ben Graham, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the city of Vandelia.
And the ordinances of the city of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Zoning and Planning Coordinator.
Of the Office of Zoning and Planning Coordinator.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dan.
That will be the other swear-in, Your Honor. That will be the only swear-in, but what I'll do now is I'll invite up Assistant Public Works Superintendent Jake Haislett to the podium here, possibly just to share a couple of words. Jake, of course, lives in Vandelia. He is a familiar face. He previously worked in the Division of Public Works from 2017 to 2021. He went to Huber Heights to work for Suez and their water department, where he got some management experience. This is a guy with a good attitude and good technical competency, so we're just happy to have him back. And just a couple of words?
Yep. Like Dan said, I'm very happy to be back in Vandelia. When I worked here, it was my dream job of working here. It was a very hard decision for me to go to Huber Heights. But I knew that, you know, if I ever had a chance to come back to be a part of management, to work with Rob and, you know, Dan and everybody here, just to make Vandelia a better place for everybody to live, I knew that was a step I had to take. So, but I'm very glad to be back. I'm very excited to work with Wally and Rob and the guys on our crew. They're a great crew. They work very hard. Today, we're replacing sewer, you know? I mean, we were muddy and, you know, making everything good for the residents. So, but I appreciate you guys, appreciate our crew, and you guys have a great evening.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Jake's also led a couple of mission trips to Ukraine, so he's got some international service experience as well. I'll just have you two gentlemen stand up. We've got Nate Bergman, who's on the right in the Vandelia Public Works shirt, and then also Justin Milhouse. So, Mr. Milhouse has extensive operating experience and a background in excavating and in construction in general. He lives in Englewood, and so we're very excited to bring him on with all of his experience. And right away, he's exercising heavy leadership in the division. Also, Nathan Bergman lives just outside, I think just outside of Springfield.
It's in Springfield, but it's on the edge.
Thank you. I like the way that you think. He was at Five Rivers Metro Parks, working as a technician there, and has just demonstrated a very good work ethic. He's originally from the Columbus area, graduated from Grove City, and so we're happy to have him in town, too. And we continue to conduct recruitments for those public works technician positions. These are the guys that'll be on the water main breaks, they'll be keeping your roads safe when it goes from black to white because of the snow, and they'll be picking up the leaves in your neighborhood. So, we want to make sure that you understand and you see the familiar and happy smiling faces. Thanks for coming in, guys, our new employees. You guys are dismissed unless you want to hang out. Not just from this meeting.
Well, we have no public hearing this evening, so that brings us to comments from interested citizens. If a member of the audience would like to speak, please state your name and address for the record and provide any comments you may have. Any comments? Tom?
Keep doing this till I get it right? Tom Grace, 10-400. 10-400 Worth Castle Road. Sorry. Still working on it. Appreciate the city's council's patience. The citizens, as we've made our wishes known concerning the warehouses that were that were proposed on Castle Road and north of Halifax. We understand Ambrose has withdrawn their request. We appreciate that from them. Believe they've heard the citizens. We hope the city council has heard the citizens as well. There has been a ground swell of support in opposition to not just those warehouses, but warehouses in general inside the city of Vandelia. I know that back in December, you guys, on your own initiative, rezoned the parcels that are west of Airport Access Road, south of 40, east of Dogleg Road, from a combination of highway, business, agricultural office, industrial park, all to the industrial innovative zoning. I heard tonight that some person who has property that was rezoned back in December, remembering that that was at the council's initiative, not at the property owner's initiative, is now subject to tighter zoning requirements on his fence because you guys have changed that zoning. My point is, city council has the authority in the charter through the zoning to change the zoning regardless of what the owner's position is on that property. That's your right. You exercised it in December. I have no idea whether those property owners were in favor or not. Haven't spoken with them. But you have that right. Not only do you have that right, did you have that right for that property west of Airport Access Road? You have that right for the property north of Halifax, west of Castle, south of Old Springfield. There are a couple of options that the citizens see as you get, the council has, to prevent warehouses from being built in the city of Vandelia. One is to change some zoning. To maybe what they were previously, but it's something that does not allow warehouses. In general, the citizens believe that most of the property that was proposed by Ambrose for development should be returned back to agricultural. I'm not sure if that's the best use of the land for the city or not. But I think you guys have an idea of what would be appropriate development. Couple of things to consider. Ambrose was proposing 700 jobs. Their average hourly rate is around $16 an hour. I would suggest that you can find professional businesses that will allow you to earn that similar level of income from a higher level of profession and less impact to the city. So, there are options that you might have should you choose to take the rezoning initiative upon yourself. The other options you have are to change the zoning code. Right now warehouses are permitted use in industrial and innovative areas. It's a conditional use on the office industrial park areas. Those permitted use and that conditional use can be removed from that zoning code. That's within your prerogative. You guys can do that. Mr. Wendt can do that as the administrator. Those are options. Should you choose not to do that, citizens are prepared to initiate a petition. Collect 15% of the voting population's signatures on the petitions and present those ordinances to you as city council for consideration. And should those be denied or rejected, we take those to the citizens for a vote. I suggest you consider your options because the citizens, I believe, have the backing to do this. The downside of the citizens taking that action to do this is that if we do that and we're successful with a vote, council is prohibited from ever changing that. It requires another initiative petition from the citizens to change that. So, I have been hesitant to gather the troops to move forward because I'm not sure what the best solution to this problem is. But I know the solution to the problem is not warehouses. And I believe the solution to the problem is not just Halifax Road, Castle Road, Old Springfield. I think it involves the larger area and other citizens in Vandelia. And, I would say, extends to Butler Township. I would encourage council to reach out to the citizens somehow. And trust me, your Facebook page is not the way to do it. I've reached more people with our Facebook page than you guys typically do. Find a way to reach out to citizens if you're unsure what their wishes are. But I believe it's in the city's best interest, long-term. I understand the short-term, but I think long-term, and it's in the best interest of the council and the citizens, to move forward with a more well-thought-out, less impactful economic development program for the city. And again, at this point, it appears that if you won't take action, I believe we have the citizens that will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Come forward, Tom.
Good evening. My name is Tom Lopper. I live on Ricky Street. I guess my question is, who owns that property in question from north of Halifax and along Castle Road? Who owns that property?
That would be CSX Transportation.
They own all that?
The railroad company, the 303 acres.
They own all of it? Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Could a person ask a question?
Come on up, Don.
I just wondered if you guys could give conversation to his comment. Is it possible to get comment from you guys about his comment?
I think probably, well, you know what, Dan, if you... Yeah, I would say, and the law director can step in here. I think one of the summaries is, yes, you are permitted under the charter or you are permitted under certain actions to be able to initiate a rezone that does not absolve you from the consequences. And so, that meaning that, sure, the city could do it. There could be legal exposure that could result of that. And so, I think what we're doing is we're looking at what are all of the opportunities and what is the appetite for that risk? That is something we'll be able to discuss in public session.
Very well. Any other questions, Tom?
Aren't we in public session?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Hutchinson. If there are additional questions, I just ask you to come to the mic to speak so that the rest of everybody else can hear. What I'm saying to you is that...
No, I'm just wondering, same thing that a person asked first. Do you guys have rebuttal that you could share with us on the fact that I think he's asking you guys to go ahead and turn it into agricultural without us having to go through the initiative?
Not at this time. There's no comments at this time for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Would counsel please me to clarify my position?
Briefly, come ahead, Tom.
And this is gonna get me in trouble. My position is not for council to necessarily rezone that property agricultural. My proposal is to rezone that something that will not support warehouses. Okay. If the citizens do it, we will likely go agricultural. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the city manager's report. Mr. Wendt?
No further report at this time, Your Honor.
All right. Information items. Action item number one, Mr. Wendt.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This is a Ohio Department of Liquor Control has notified the city of Vandelia of an application to transfer from Oscar's Sports Bar and Grill LLC to 320 Dixie LLC, doing business as Oscar's Sports Bar and Grill. There's no opposition from the Division of Police to this transfer.
May I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we do not request a hearing from the Ohio Department of Liquor Control.
Second.
Second, I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakeslee. Have the rule.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faust.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Let's see. That'll bring us no old business. Mr. McDonald, we have a resolution by title 22R-54.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an automatic mutual aid response agreement with the city of Dayton with respect to the Dayton International Airport and surrounding commercial industrial areas.
Very well. May I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wendt.
Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Please explain.
The city of Vandelia maintains an automatic mutual aid response, or AMAR, agreement with the city of Dayton for covering responses to the Dayton International Airport and to the commercial areas that are located in and around in the city of Dayton, around the airport. A similar agreement is currently in place. I'm requesting that the agreement be modified to include fire responses into the airport property. This is based on the recommendation of Chief Folick, and I agree with it. Many of the properties are being covered already by Butler Township through a separate agreement. The city of Vandelia provides mutual aid to Butler Township and vice versa. And this agreement would allow the city of Vandelia to continue responding with the ladder truck and its third or greater medic when available during an emergency. If we're not available, we don't respond. And this is, meaning that it's contingent upon the availability of Vandelia staff and apparatus. And with that said, I'd recommend passage of this resolution.
Very well, thank you. Now may I have a motion?
A move that we approve, resolution 22-R-54.
Second.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Ayers and a second by Mr. Folick. Are there any comments by council? I'll briefly say that I moved to table this at the last meeting. I've rethought that position, but my underlying concerns are still the same. I think Mr. Folick made a sage comment when he said that we don't want to be in a position where our municipality is choosing or picking and choosing those municipalities that we're gonna offer mutual aid to. And that's true. It's incumbent upon cities and in agreements that we've previously entered into to provide mutual aid to other people when they're in need. Makes a lot of sense. And I have no objection to that, but my objection to that is that the city of Dayton, who has no, offers no services at the airport to any of the buildings in development, and they then want to make it incumbent upon others to service them because they haven't taken the time, the energy, the tax money that they've garnered to build their own infrastructure. And in this particular agreement, the primary respondent is Butler Township. Practically speaking, we agree to offer mutual aid to Butler Township. So, in any happenstance, Butler Township is the primary, and we're gonna be servicing it anyway, regardless of our position related to this mutual aid or the vote. The third person in line for servicing that is the city. So, they contract with Butler Township, Vandelia, and then the city of Dayton. City of Dayton collects all the tax revenue. They have none of the service requirements. And all this does, this specific agreement, enlarges that area, which is basically encompasses the entire airport. It's more on a matter of principle that I disputed and wanted to table this. But the fact of the matter is, the practical effect of this agreement won't be changed if we voted no. There is no appetite to do that. And I would say that one of the things that changed my mind is if things get dramatically worse with the city of Dayton, that the city of Vandelia has the ability, I believe it's within 90 days, to withdraw from the agreement at any time. But I do believe the overriding principle of providing mutual aid to people is probably a good one. And for that reason, I will change my objection and vote in favor of it this evening. Any other comments? With that, Mr. McDonald, would you call the rule?
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faust.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Next, we have resolution 22R-60.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of Highway Rock Salt from American Rock Salt Company LLC at a price of $83.82 per ton for the winter of 2022, 2023, and $91.45 per ton for the winter of 2023, 2024, for an amount up to 2,000 tons each winter.
Mr. Wendt?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city participates in the Southwest Ohio Purchasers for Government Purchasing Consortium for the bidding of Highway Rock Salt. The consortium recently received bids on behalf of 93 entities. The city received two bids with American Rock Salt Company LLC of Mount Morris, New York, providing the lowest and best bid of $83.82 per ton for 2022 to 23, and $91.45 for 23 to 24, for an estimated amount at 2,000 tons per year. This price is $27 per ton more than last year's bid. However, I think we're looking pretty good on volume, and we don't have to buy a certain amount. So, if we don't need it, we won't buy it.
Very well. May I have a motion?
Take a motion. We approve resolution 22R-60.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakeslee and a second by Ms. Faust. Are there any comments by council? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faust.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Resolution 22R-61.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an economic development government equity agreement with Montgomery County Office of Economic Development regarding the Kendall Electric Project and to enter into an edge agreement with the edge grant recipient.
Mr. Wendt?
Your Honor, on May 10th, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners approved a $150,000 edge grant for what we were calling at that time Project Quarantine. That's actually Kendall Electric. We're allowed to use that name now. This resolution will authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Mount Montgomery County and the company regarding these grant funds.
Very well. May I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve resolution 22-R-61 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Folick and a second by Mr. Blakeslee. Are there any comments from council? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Faust.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. We have ordinances. We do have one ordinance in its first reading, ordinance 2235. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending Vandelia Codified Ordinances, Section 1042.11, 1044.060, and 1045.28 regarding water sewer, wastewater treatment, and stormwater drainage rates.
Mr. Wendt?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a first reading only. This ordinance amends the Vandelia Codified Ordinance sections. This ordinance amends the Vandelia Codified Ordinance Sections 1042.11, 1044.06 Delta, and 1045.28 regarding water sewer, wastewater treatment, and storm water drainage rates. Adjusting these rates will ensure adequate funds are available for future necessary capital operating and regulatory-related expenses.
Very well. May I have a motion?
Your honor, I'll move to approve ordinance 22-35 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Folic and a second by Ms. Fairst. Are there any comments from council? Oh, Mr.?
Your honor, not to intrude, and I want to do this in the appropriate way. At our last council meeting, I gave a rather extensive update regarding the future goals, the capital needs. I won't belabor it unless you want me to give that presentation again. I thought it was a good presentation. The, when we go through this, there are a couple of things that I just want to highlight. I've got some factoids in this presentation about what the infrastructure is, the system needs and expenses that are coming. Based on the feedback from the council, this proposal includes an escalator of 2.25% that would be effective on the first bill every January for water, wastewater, storm water. Following that, the other, you know, the other part that I want to put out to you is the change in the five-year forecast and the additional revenue. While that appears like a lot, what I've done is I've gone through each of the slides, keeping in mind... Let me see here. I've gone through for the budget impacts, and I've updated that to reflect where you are in relation to your target fund balance. For instance, currently in the five-year forecast, by the time we get out five years from our 2022 budget, we anticipated that in '26, we would have, we would be almost $600,000 in the hole. Obviously, we can't do that with an enterprise fund. This adjustment in 2027 brings us to just over, just under $1 million, which is about $235,000 over your target fund balance. While that sounds like a lot, it really isn't compared to water main breaks and replacements. With regard to the storm budget, I've updated those figures, and naturally, the big portion is sewer. We are looking at substantial plant, plant upgrades, $40 to $60 million in that system that we share with Huber Heights and Tipp City. And so you'll recall, we were pretty close in the margin as to being above, just maybe $100,000 above that target for a fund this size. After five years, we forecast being up just about $650,000 above that. Again, for a wide-scale utility, that isn't much of a margin. The majority of this proposal, currently, we're looking at a deficit of $4.6 million, and it's necessary to raise 5.4. And I'll just keep in mind and remind you that the current sewer rate is cheaper than it was in the year 2000. So that's how we've ended up here.
Mr. Went, you also said that there's some EPA mandates as well for equipment coming that...
Oh, absolutely.
That all wastewater facilities will have to be upgraded, and some of those costs are rolled into that increase, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And our, if I come over to this, I'm trying to find the slide. Of course, I'm not doing it in order. You know, there's the phosphorus and ammonia limits. Our wastewater treatment plant is that of a trickle filter versus activated sludge. We're studying with Huber Heights and Tipp City through Tri-Cities several variations, but with that, also, we're at discharge limits whereby there are discharges that occur during rain events in our sanitary system. And so we do have some findings and orders that have to be resolved in the system, and that relates to the $15 million storage expansion. Think about it as adding a big bladder or a belly within the system for wastewater to collect during a rain event. And then, of course, on the water side is just systematic, systematic replacement of water lines is really what you're looking at there with an aging water line system.
The only other thing I want to comment tonight is, I just want to make sure that, I think there's, I think this issue, but then also the electric and gas aggregation issue that we've moved forward to be on the ballot in November. I think both of these issues are going to require a substantial amount of communication to our residents and end users. I think there is a huge education component to this to go along with the rate increases and what we have done, what needs to be done, what the price tag is on those. And when I say, you know, communication to our residents, I really think it needs to be a direct mail to every resident in Vandelia. I don't think we can count on social media for this. I think there needs to be, whether it's a newsletter or whether it's a direct piece that goes out to residents about this issue and both the electric and gas aggregation, because, I mean, we, you know, we have a lot of residents who aren't on social media, who are going to be impacted by both issues, and I think it's important that we get that information to them. So that would be my ask, is that between now and, you know, early, early to mid-October, because people are going to be voting, starting in early October, that we are putting information in the hands of residents directly, but then also, you know, obviously, social media, the website, et cetera, so that they are informed on these two issues when that... This one, we've got a little bit more time, but I think the aggregation issue is pretty pressing.
Mr. McDonald? The, with regard to, with regard to ballot issues for the aggregation, are staff limited? Am I limited in the amount of staff time that I'm allowed to allocate for such an issue? Or does that have to be done by a third party of some sort?
It's often done through a third-party consultant. It's really more, all we can provide is informational materials. We can't say, you know...
We can mail those.
Yeah, but we should be able to mail all that stuff ourselves.
That's what I want to make sure of, is that we can mail objective and factual information.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem at all.
Thank you. I have, I agree with Councilman Folic, because I am convinced that this increase is needed, and it's been kicked down the road for years. And what's facing us is basically catastrophic expenses in the future, and we need to be prepared. But it doesn't change the fact that we're going to be raising all of the property owners' water and sewer rates, what I believe significantly. And we need to let the public know why. Are there any other comments? With that, Mr. McDonald, would you call the rule?
I will. Just a reminder, this is simply to move it to the second reading. This is just in the first reading.
Indeed.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. All right, we have ordinance 2232 in its second reading. Mr. McDonald?
Declaring the improvements to certain parcels in the city to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.40B, provide for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing school compensation payments.
Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I need to pass... Oh, Mr. Went, go ahead.
Thank you very much, your honor. This ordinance declares a certain land within Stone Quarry Crossings to be part of tax increment financing program. Parcels with the capstone, within the capstone TIF area, will make service payments in lieu of taxes that enable the city to make public infrastructure improvements that will directly benefit the parcels within the TIF area. The school district will be made whole under this proposal, and I would ask that you pass and adopt this in a second reading.
Very well. Since this is an ordinance in the second reading, I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to address council on this legislation, 2232, please come forward to the podium, your name and an address, and provide your comments. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance 22-32 in a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Mr. Ayers. Are there any comments by council? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Next, we have ordinance 2235 in its second reading. 2233. Thank you.
This is going to be deja vu.
Yeah.
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels in the city to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing school compensation payments.
Very well. Mr. Went?
Your honor, this ordinance declares certain land west of the airport access road to be part of a tax increment financing program. Parcels within the industrial innovation TIF area will make service payments in lieu of taxes that will enable the city to make public infrastructure improvements that will directly benefit the parcels within the TIF area. The school district will be made whole under this proposal.
Very well. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone has comments related to ordinance 2233, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and render your comments. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Your honor, I'll move to approve ordinance 22-33 in a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve ordinance 2233. Are there any comments of council? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald, will you recall the rule?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Next, we have ordinance 2234 in its second reading. Mr. McDonald?
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels in the city to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be extended, expended, excuse me, and authorizing school compensation payments.
Mr. Went?
Thank you, your honor. This ordinance declares the remaining land within the Northwoods Business Park to be part of a tax increment financing program. Parcels within this specific TIF area will make service payments in lieu of taxes that will enable the city to make public infrastructure improvements that will directly benefit the parcels within the TIF area. The school district will be made whole under this proposal.
Very well. Since this is an ordinance in the second reading, we'll open the public hearing for ordinance 2234. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address council? Please come forward and give your name and address and your comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
Your honor, I'll move to approve ordinance 22-34 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Folic and a second by Mr. Blakesley. Are there any comments of council? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald, we have the rule.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. We have no emergency ordinances, ordinance in the minutes from the BZA meeting of July 27. We have reports from boards and commissions, BZA minutes, those BZA minutes. Are there any comments? Very well, that brings us to council comments. Mr. McDonald?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Went?
None this evening, your honor.
Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Blakesley?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Folic?
Just to congratulate Chief Folic and Captain Milliken on the, their efforts to secure the assistance to firefighters grant for just a quarter of a million dollars for SCBA moving forward. So congratulation to them for their efforts in that. And then also, just to thank Ms. Holloway and any other staff that were involved. I received an email from a resident earlier, I guess it was last week, regarding the site, the development site on Bolton Abbey, and some trash and debris that was left behind by the contractors. And I think in less than 24 hours' time, that was picked up and taken care of and followed up by Ms. Holloway. So I appreciate that, and the resident appreciated the quick action as well. So, thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Fairst?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Ayers?
I'm fine, thank you.
I was going to ask, would like to excuse Mayor Herbst from tonight's meeting. In the form of a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very well, he stands excused. And I'm going to bring this to an end, and I have no further comments.